I thought it was 8:15 still. I didn't know where it was.
We're live, go ahead.
Okay, okay. I'd like to open up the regular meeting and Board of Police Commissioners, please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Okay, first, is there any public comment? Do we have any written public comment? I do not. Anybody there that would like to speak from the public? Okay, here are no public comment at this time. Could I have a motion to approve of the regular meeting on April 15, 2020? Just raise your hand and state your name for the record.
So move Dave Bitts out.
Tom Bennett, I'll second it.
Seconding John Duke, I believe?
Tom Bennett or John Duke, either one.
Oh, okay, Tom Bennett, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stention so carry. Thank you. Okay, approval of special meeting on April 29, 2020. State your name for the record.
Kyle also moved.
Kyle Kelly made the motion. Do I have a second?
Move the motion, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Kyle made a motion approval of special meeting on April 29.
I second it.
Second by Dave Bitts, all discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Stention so carry, 5-0, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kyle, if I may, just one housekeeping tip. Anybody that's on, if you're not speaking, or if you're not one of the board members, please mute yourself. Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do too, before we go to the next order of business, is that unfortunately, because of what's going around in this country, and in this state with this virus, a few of our residents of Seymour have passed away that have served on different boards or commissions, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence for former First Selectman Dan Brandon, also John Chuck, who served on the Board of Public Works, and also in the Fire Department, I think Dan Brandon also was in the Fire Department, Al Yagavane, who served on a number of boards, and I know I'm probably missing others, but I'd just like to have a moment of silence for those three at this time. Okay, thank you very much. And if I miss anybody, or if anybody thinks we should do others, please let me know. I really don't like reading the newspaper anymore lately. I just don't like seeing things like this happen. At this time, I need a motion to go to executive session for personnel. We're going to include the board members, and we're going to include, I believe, the attorneys. Ben, you'll be involved. Will Brian be in there too?
No, just myself.
Just yourself, okay. The board members and Ben Proto will go into executive session to discuss personnel matter. Could I have a motion to do that at this time? Motion by Dave Bitts.
Second.
Do I have a second? Second by John Duke. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Stention so carry, 5-0. We're going to executive session at whoever has the right time.
6:34, what I'm going to do is stop the recording, and everybody else that's on, I'll put into the waiting room, and we'll bring you back in when we're done.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody is in, recording's back on.
I'd like to make a motion, we come out of executive session at, I can't see the clock, 7:42?
7:42. Second by Kyle.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Did you get that, Caroline? Okay, okay, no motions or action was taken in executive session. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstention so carry. Thank you, 5-0. Okay, next on the agenda, next on the agenda, come on to executive session and take possible action IA. We're not taking no action on IA at this time.
This is Attorney Proto, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a question, will you require any of my services for the remainder of your meeting?
I should make it.
What's that?
Say, I should say yes, but no, I don't think so. You could go if you would like.
If the board needs me, I'm happy to stay. If not, save a couple dollars.
No, yeah, no, let's save the dollars because we need them.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night all. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, continuing on, management report. Chief?
Yes, good evening. Chief Chakowski speaking. So, we're nearing the end of the year, the budget looks good at this point. Last month, I stated there is a potential issue with the overtime issue. That's been straightened out with the Finance Director, and some of the stuff was being charged to a different area of the budget. He straightened that out, and we're okay at this point. However, we're getting to our busy season, May and June, so I'm sure by the end of June, we're probably going to have to do a transfer in that line item, but we'll monitor that closely and see how it goes. Same for supers, there's some money left in supers, but depending on how much they work from now to the end of June, again, kind of the same issue with that. I reported last month that we're running some short in our projected income. That remains, that's mostly due to the lack of private duty that's been all year long, and the administrative fees that we collect from that private duty job, so we're going to be short, I'm estimating anywhere between 20,000 to 21,000 in our projected income, and that's mainly due to the private duty and some of the parking fines. So, as the businesses shut down and lack of enforcement downtown and other areas because of this COVID-19 virus, so we're going to be short in those areas. Memorial Day Parade has been canceled, however, there will be one for vets on Monday that's being planned. I just learned a short while ago, the Pumpkin Festival in September has been canceled, and that's been canceled till next year, 2021. Over the past two months or so, as I mentioned last month, there's been a lot of parades, and I believe we participate in over 200-plus parades. Those are coming to an end today, and then there will still be some on special occasions, such as I stated, like the Memorial Day Monday, they're planning one for the vets. During this time, again, we continue to get the great support from the community, and we're very gracious for everything they have done for us, continuing to do. The food cards, you know, food, gift cards, PPE equipment still come in, and we're very gracious to that. Badges and wallets for the Commissioners, those have been distributed. Those finally came in, and I gave those to the Commissioners that were waiting for those. We're still working on the, with the vendor. Some of this has been prolonged because of what's been happening, but the ID cards for the officers, we're finalizing that list, we're finalizing the design, and hopefully those will be ordered next week. Get that going. Let's see here. We had a officer had a minor motor vehicle accident this morning, minor motor vehicle accident, some damage to a car, struck a sign post, I believe down at the BPW location, Public Works. Training online, a lot of classes have been canceled the past several months, so we're looking to do training online, so the officers will still get training, will still get credits. You know, it'll work similar to like Zoom, and similar to what we're doing now, but it'll be online training for the officers. Sergeants did a class, I believe just the other day, Supervisor Liability for Sergeants and Supervisors, they did one the other day. I think it's worked out great. The three commanders are going to Internal Affairs School, they're doing it over the next, one day a week for the next three or four weeks, and they're working on that similar online training. That's been talked about before, even before this crisis occurred, but this just catapulted everything with what has occurred, and it's probably going to be the new normalcy moving forward until things, but what's that new normalcy going to be? We don't really know. You know, a lot of academies, if the running academies are, a lot of them are being done this way also. With that, we're trying to get back to normal in police activities. We're going to be looking to maybe open up fingerprinting for pistol permit and job applicants within the next couple of days, or if not, early next week. I know there's been some issues with that around the state, and so I think the sooner we can get that done, the better. Some other issues here, the air conditioner is not working at the Police Department, the Facilities Director, Tim Connors, is working to get that fixed, hopefully sooner than later. However, from what I understand, there's a pretty good cost to that, and I think they're looking at some other options, upgrading some of that equipment, and maybe tying it into a new energy project or something of that sort from what I'm being told, but hopefully the weather will stay nice, and we won't get that extreme heat, and they'll get that fixed for us. The SROs, they've been, with the cancellation of schools, their SROs have been reassigned to patrol until obviously school starts, if and when that may be, not really sure. We're due to have one officer coming back to work that's been on maternity leave, and we look forward to her coming back and getting back in her position here at the PD. And then I just want to give a great note of thanks to our custodians, Alex Danka, and so Alex Danka and some of the school custodians have teamed up, and they have really gone through this building, and they have taken upon themselves to clean the floors, and I just want to give them a great thanks to that. I know you haven't been here, but you, I think you would be really amazed to see the difference in the maintenance of this building since we've been closed, and the floors that had a brownish tint to them are now bright and shining white the way they should be, and they're like brand new, they really are. So, thanks to Alex, thanks to David Solello, Tom Schutie, and Paul Valu for being here every day and getting that done for us. It definitely doesn't make a difference in the working environment here at the Police Department. I believe that's it for now, so if you have any questions?
Any board members have any questions? Just raise your hand, state your name for the record. Okay, here are no questions from the board members.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Chief, I was going through the report, and I know you had mentioned a few months back from the tornado, you're getting some money for Polaris, and I was looking at the quotes. Have you pulled the trigger on that, or how is that going to work? Does that have to go through us to get the additional monies for that, or?
Yes, well, that's on the agenda tonight. I believe that's number 10 on the agenda, so there I'll explain.
I'll shut up. I'll shut up.
Okay, any board, any board members have any other questions? Okay, Commissioners' comments. I'm going to go through the Commissioners, Mr. Bitts.
Not at this time.
Tom Bennett?
I'm all set, thank you.
John Duke?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Kyle Kelly?
I do have one, and it's just a recommendation or a suggestion. When John and I, Commissioner Duke and I were doing some rounds before we were elected, Bunting Road was a big road of concern, at least for the residents on that road as far as traffic and speed, and as you guys, Chief, you know, start to get back into some normalcy and maybe doing some more radar, if Bunting Road and that area, you know, Bunting and Eleanor, Bunting and Walter, maybe throw some radar up that way, if that's okay.
Yes, I know there's been an issue with the radar trailer, that's usually a great tool. I know they were looking at that, I think it maybe has to be recalibrated, or something wrong with the batteries maybe, but we want to start getting that out into the neighborhoods, and then if we have to, we could probably get that time mark machine, which obviously monitors the traffic, and that'll give us an idea again what's happening in those neighborhoods, but as well as enforcement. I know we started, I believe we're starting to step up some of that enforcement, and we need to, as we said, trying to get back to normalcy, and I think we have starting to do that, but we need to expand on that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no other comments, we're going to move on to old business. One of the items on old business is how many IAs are pending and completed since July 1, 2018. I believe the board members received a copy today of all the IAs that are pending and completed. My question to you, Chief, is we had one employee in the position as Deputy Chief, he did more than one IA a month in the 22 months he was employed by the town. How was he able to still handle his regular duties?
You were a little broken up, but I think I got most of what you were asking. So, I mean, those are part of his duties, right? So, I mean, you got to prioritize, you have to juggle the schedule, and you know, you do the best you can with what you have to make work, so. You know, a lot of these come to us, we don't go looking for these IAs, right? So, if you look at these lists, and I don't know if you want to go year by year, or I don't know, you know, I laid it out, everything that's there, but if you look at 2019, you go through that list, 12 out of the 17 cases came to us, right? So, that's between civilian complaints, that's between officers writing stuff here and forwarding stuff to us, that obviously we have to look into as administrators. So, 12 out of 17, that's over 70% of those cases came to us, right? And then if you take those two motor vehicle accidents, we had that discussion last month about motor vehicle accidents and what our procedures were in place at the time, that if you got in a motor vehicle accident, you know, we looked into that, and so now you're up to 14 out of those 17 cases, so, and then there were some other ones that things occurred, and we had to look into. So, those are, that's our job as administrators, and you know, we do what we have to do to.
Okay, thank you, Chief. The reason I brought it up, only because I went through it very briefly today, because I didn't get that list until late this afternoon, or early this afternoon. I got the list, and I went through the list, and I'm just one person, and our Commissioners go through the list too. I believe at least eight of those IAs could have been handled through you as chief, and not an IA, but that's your decision and so forth, and that's some discussion we're going to have to have in the future concerning, and we did have it last month, concerning what constitutes an IA versus just having the Sergeant or Commander taking charge of it. But that's why I brought it up, Chief. Okay, I didn't bring it up to criticize, I just brought it up just for general information tonight.
No, I understand, and I appreciate that. I compiled that list over the last couple of days, and I believe that went out yesterday, but maybe, you know, there was a problem with the email server or whatever, but you should have received that yesterday, but it would have gave me a little, maybe a little more time. But again, you know, we don't go looking for these, right? So, when you got officers filing complaints on officers and supervisors writing people up, that those have to get investigated by us. I mean, we have no other choice around that, so, yeah, I mean, I look forward to further discussion, and hopefully, you know, work together to maybe have a better understanding amongst ourselves, you know, moving forward and what we want to do, and but, you know, a lot of this, we have no control over, so. And I hope people understand that, but you know, times have changed quite substantially. You know, when you talk about transparency and public trust, you know, and the public expects, obviously, some of this stuff to be done. I mean, a lot of it's mandated by things that have changed from the state level to post, obviously, and then to us, so, and now that's based on training and everything else, so. Just explain that a little better, so.
Okay, Chief, thank you. I just, like I said, I just feel that quite a few of the IAs could have been handled through the Chief's office versus doing a complete IA on them, but that's something for discussion in the future. Any board members have any questions concerning IAs? I know you just got a copy today of them. I don't hear from you. Yes, John?
Chief, just real quick, is this something that the server, has it been acting funny? Is there an issue with the server? Is that something IT should be looking into? You said?
The emails, you mean?
Yeah, with the emails coming through, you said it was possibly a server issue?
Well, I'm always surmising that, right? Because I sent these out yesterday, and he's saying he got that today. But no, we have had issues with our email server, and I don't know if it's the vendor or what, but IT, the IT person for the town, Rob Dyer, he is looking into that, and I believe he's with, working with Detective Mattisovich, and they are looking at other options, so whatever the town has on their side, I believe they're trying to look at that and give us that platform and kick us over to that, and from what I understand, that's a better option for us. So, you know, we're trying to get things in place, hopefully by July, and I know there's been several discussions on that, but I will follow up with the Detective Mattisovich and Rob Dyer to see where they're at, but I know Rob Dyer wants to get us off that platform and to the town side, so, and then we will have better control, even, you know, modifications or any changes that need to be made, they will have it. Right now, anything that needs to be done, they have to go through the vendor that we have, so.
All right. Yeah, I'm looking at mine too, it was today.
I just want to, I just want to say, Chief, sorry, sorry, John. Bob, Chairman, speaking. Chief, I want to say today, I called you late this morning to ask you how come we didn't get a copy of those, and you told me that we didn't ask for them, and you gave them to the attorneys. I had to call Attorney Brian LeClair to get copies sent to each of the board members. They didn't come from you, they came from the attorney today. So, I mean, it had nothing to do with the IT and emails not coming forward, because we didn't get them until today, and that was from Brian LeClair who gave it to us. Yes, Kyle?
Just to be fair, and I see Caroline's eyes twitching over there. I got mine on a group message yesterday afternoon at 4:09 from Caroline.
As I did as well, 4:09 from Caroline, it didn't come from the Chief.
Okay, regardless, it was out, it went out yesterday afternoon.
Okay, Caroline sent them out yesterday afternoon. Okay, I guess the Chief and I didn't know that. Because the Chief said he was going to check with the attorneys. Yes, go ahead, Chief.
What you're talking about was a different issue, it had nothing to do with the IAs. You asked for information in regards to PO, and that's what we discussed, and I explained to you, I was at Town Hall, and then I spoke with the attorney, and I believe he sent you the information that was requested, as I discussed with you, so I think there's two different issues there. That's all I'm just bringing to your attention.
Chief, you are correct, there are two different issues I'm talking about. Yesterday was the IAs, and today was, which we got from Brian LeClair, was copies of the GPS report, so I want to correct myself, and I apologize for any misunderstanding of that. It wasn't concerning the IAs, it was concerning because Caroline didn't send them out yesterday afternoon. She's very efficient, and it was about the GPS, where it was purchased, who purchased it, and when it was purchased, and so forth, and we got that today, so that was done today. So, I just want to correct that. Okay, going on to patrol reports. Any of the board members, if you have a comment, just state your name, so Caroline could see that. Okay, under patrol reports, I just want to ask the Chief, I noticed the state police are doing something very safe for their officers, and maybe we could institute it, because we only had, I believe, 13 motor vehicle stops in a whole month of April, and that's kind of disappointing to see only 13 stops. The way cars are speeding through the roads today in Seymour, I'm a little disappointed seeing not more patrol cars just sitting at intersections, just looking, not necessarily they have to pull cars over and so forth, but what the state police are doing is they have little sandwich bags, plastic sandwich bags, they go up to the motor vehicle when they pull them over, the person puts their license, registration, insurance card in this little plastic sandwich bag, the police officer, the state trooper goes back to his car, runs everything, and if a ticket is going to be given, or a written warning is going to be given, he puts everything back in that little plastic bag, and puts the ticket and everything in that plastic bag, and hands it back to the individual. The individual's not signing it now, only because of what's going on at this time. Is there any chance that we could do that, so our officers are safe, where if they do approach a car and have to talk to somebody that the individual, instead of touching stuff, they could just put it in the plastic bags, because I guess it is working for the state police?
All right, Mr. Commissioner, Deputy Chief Rinaldi here. I'll look into that, and I believe he has the state police is doing that. I'm speaking to the commanders to try to get more motor vehicle stops in. I know there was a concern about the coronavirus, but you know, they have enough of equipment on them, their gloves, their masks, their face shields, you know, they basically approach from the driver's side, that's all they have to do is just look at the driver's license, they could go back to their vehicle and punch the information, and especially nowadays, when you put all that information in a picture of the person, it will come up, you know, and then they're given sanitizer and stuff like that after the fact. As far as like, what you're talking about are infractions and warning tickets, you know, you don't have to have those signed. As far as summons, they have to sign those, you know, we tell them, use a different pen, have the person sign off if they have to, and then wipe it down with the wipes we give them. You know, it's being addressed, you know, I'm a little disappointed with the small number of stops that were done, but we will look into that and see if that's more sufficient than what we're doing. Again, I could tell you right now, based on some of the paperwork I've seen within the past couple of weeks, we seem to have improved the motor vehicle stops, more tickets and sums has have been issued, but I will look into that further for you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Kyle.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Kyle.
I was under the impression, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was under the impression that that was the general consensus during the month of March and at least April, that, you know, the amount of interaction was going to be limited as far as more. I've had conversations with officers from not just our town, but other towns, and I mean, statewide, nationwide, really, you know, things have drastically changed to limit the amount of motor vehicle stops and interactions. So, I thought that that's something that was talked about, I couldn't be wrong, but that's where I thought we were for, you know, at least May, or at least March and April. Now, obviously, things are changing, and people are coming up with different ideas, and things are starting to open, so obviously, things are going to change and relax a little bit.
Dave Bitts, I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yeah, Dave.
I agree, we had to take precautions and be sensitive during the months of March and April, but, and this is not just Seymour, this is all, many towns, maybe even part of the state force, but it's the standing joke out there that, hey, listen, guys, you could almost get away with a bank robbery today, because no one's going to pull you over, no one's going to chase you down, but, you know, I'm on the road a fair amount, even though I've been grounded for nine weeks now, working from home, I'm still on the road a little bit, and I see state cops, you know, setting up radar, I see state cops pulling over people, and it always seems they approach them from the passenger side, not from the driver's side, so they put even more distance between them, and that hasn't been going on just recently, it's kind of always been. I think over the years, it's gone to approaching the car from the passenger side, just for safety reasons. So, I second and third everything that we're talking about here, and we should be stepping it up a little bit. I will say, I see patrol all over the place. If I go up down the hill, I might see three cars between coming down from Gray Hill Road all the way down to downtown, so they're out there driving around, but maybe, you know, once again, we need to kind of turn this around a little bit. One other thing too, I think it was last month, I heard something about a hit and run where it was, I think it was in one of our meetings, where a car hit one of our cruisers and took off, and pursuit started, but then was called off. Isn't it? Isn't, isn't a hit and run a felony?
Deputy Chief Rinaldi, no, it's a misdemeanor.
Is it? Okay.
Sir, it's, yeah, it's a misdemeanor. As far as your thing about approaching from the driver's side, passenger side, that's basically the state police. I guess that's how they're trained. I could tell you, I was trained to go from the driver's side. It could depend on what, what the academy teaches now and which way to approach a vehicle. Again, I feel more comfortable going on the, on the passenger side if and when I do make any stops anymore compared to going on the passenger side. And that's just how I was taught. And, you know, certain, certain other officers were taught by me and other officers here that do that. Again, nowadays, maybe it might be different. It depends on the training. And that's all I have. Fair enough.
Thank you, Deputy, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting something either way. I'm just talking a lot about what I see, about my observations. You guys know what's best. It's your safety at risk. It's your call. I'm not telling anybody what to do. I'm just having, you know, having a conversation.
Chief, also, I have had a complaint from a resident who is also a state rep in town. While she was walking, she was almost hit with a fast, fast-driving reckless drivers in the area, pair of on the side of town. So I think, I think some people getting pulled over would be a good start to correcting that.
Okay, Deputy Chief Rinaldi, what's the road, sir? Or the area up on Gray Hill or?
That's for Gray Hill Road area, yes.
Okay.
He's Sackowski speaking.
I know we've got.
Yeah, so. Am I able to speak or? Yeah, so I'm, I'm in a great, we need to start stepping it up. We, we did say, we did say in the beginning, you know, we, due to the unknown of what was occurring, we did do that, right? We, we kind of said, you know, take precautions, settle down a little bit, you know, still be out there. You know, if you see extreme violations, egregious behavior, obviously you have to do what you have to do. But, so again, we're going to enhance that. As far as the misdemeanor and a vehicle, pursuits are basically a thing of the past. I mean, that's by state law. And even if a car is damaged, unless there was an officer, if it was intentional, like they strike the officer, meaning he was out of his vehicle, or, so if it's just property damage, there's, those are pretty much the line now. You know, if it's property damage or just stolen property, you know, pursuits are kind of a thing of the past, so we would not be pursuing. We attempt to stop, and then obviously it's up to the supervisor to enact with, based on their training and the situation. And so, yeah, hopefully that clarifies some of the things for the Commissioner.
And then, and Ms. Bob again speaking. I all brought it up, the safety of the officers comes first, but also safety of the public comes first. So I mean, you got, you got to really weigh yourself. I mean, out of 13 motor vehicle stops, I'm sure more than 13 people violated the law with all our patrol cars out there. You can't allow people going through red lights. You can't allow people going through stop signs. I happen to live in a low location where there is stop signs, and I could, I could tell you, one out of every five cars go through the stop sign. I haven't seen a police officer sitting here with radar or anything just to check it out. But I mean, I'm only one person. I don't want any special privileges or anything. But let them go somewhere else in front of stop signs. But they, I really believe that my suggestions of what the state police are doing to keep their officers protected from this virus is that maybe if we could institute some of those with the sandwich bags and so forth, so there's no really physical contact with the person when you do pull them over. So that's why I suggested, it was no other reason. I, I just don't want a serious motor vehicle accident to happen because we have a policy not to pull over for too many cars. So, so that's why I brought it up. Any board members have any comments on patrol? No, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Moving on, detective reports. Yes?
I just wanted to bring one other thing. Deputy Chief Rinaldi here. The other thing.
Oh, yes, okay, Deputy Chief.
You guys are aware, we did have a fatal motorcycle crash on April 4th there. Commander Parat's investigating it. That's been a lengthy investigation so far. It's still, it's still under investigation. That's all I have.
Okay, I, I noticed one thing on a patrol report too, is that it seems like we're having quite a few more domestics. Maybe people are spending too much time with each other? I, I don't know.
Deputy Chief Rinaldi again, yeah, probably. We did have a spike in the domestics in April as well as a car break-ins, as you can see in some of the reports.
Yes.
You know, the domestics, basically, again, there's been a spike in there. If we can make an arrest, we made an onsite arrest. We are allowing officers right now that if it's a misdemeanor, such as a breach of peace or disorderly conduct, something like that, where we don't have to bring the person in, we'll issue a summons in the field. Usually, our policy is to bring them in under normal circumstances. So far, you know, we, it's been pretty good with person, people we've been bringing in to, to lock up where we have our mask on, that we'll put a mask on them, and we've been able to fingerprint them without officers being infected with anything.
Okay, no, thank, thank you for that. I was just saying, I was just saying domestics, as a police officer, domestic is probably the most, one of the most difficult ones to go because you never know what's going to happen after domestic disturbance. But I want to thank the officers for doing what they are doing. Next, detective reports. Any comments on detective reports? Okay, any comments on the K-9 report? Update on police dog vests? Who would like to give me that update? Would the dog, dog handler or the chief or deputy chief want somebody to just give us an update on the vest for the dogs?
I could, Officer Sackowski.
Okay, John?
So the, the vests were ordered. One of them was ordered on March 2nd. That's Officer Gallo's dogs. 90 days, he'll have his. So sometime in June, he'll be receiving his vest. The person that was going to make the donation on my dog, I reached out to him on Friday, waiting to hear back from him. The, his company hasn't been up and running due to the virus. So he's trying to see what actually he can swing for the donation on that side of it. So I can, I'll get back to you on, on my dog's vest when I hear from him.
Okay.
I got a couple of things under K-9 if you're wanting to hear them.
Yes, please.
So Officer Gallo took the initiative to vested interest, sent on an email. They gave us two Narcan kits, a piece for our canines with carrying cases, in case they come in contact with any heroin. So Officer Gallo took care of that. We did receive those kits already for the canines. And last, the in-service training that we do, the amount is coming, the payment's coming due in July 1st. So I just wanted to get that out there so we can get them paid on time this year. Last year, we ran a couple of months behind. I will get the Chief the invoice on that. But that's due before July 1st for both canines for in-service, for the training for two days a month. Just wanted to get that out to put it on record. That's all I have for K-9.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, SRO, really, there's nothing to report. We're not working in the schools at this time. Chief, what shifts are there to SRO officers now? Or Deputy Chief?
Right now, both SROs are working day shift. As of Friday, one's going to be on day shift, the second one will be on midnights.
The reason why I bring this up, can't you have one on the second, one on the midnight shift? Only because the first shift seems like they have the majority of the controlmen at this time?
Well, we've, we've evened it out with the shifts.
Okay.
10, 10, and 9. So basically, based on seniority, one SRO just wanted to go to midnights due to, you know, issues with the family, and that's the best.
Okay.
It's midnights.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Do board members have any comments? Okay, moving on, car report update on new police vehicles. Who wants to give us an update on new police vehicles? Yes, Dave Bitso. Bitso. Bitso.
You're on mute.
Go ahead, Dave.
He's on mute.
Okay, let me unmute. Bob, there's, there's a delay when you ask a question, so you got to give us a couple of seconds to respond.
Oh, okay.
Deputy Chief, I just want to say I applaud you for working with the officers to accommodate special situations like that. I think that's admirable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have an update on the new police vehicles? What status are we in with the three new police vehicles?
Yeah, so the status is, they were all sent, they were all lettered. The equipment has been ordered. I talked to the vendor. There were some delays, obviously, with the COVID, some, some impayments. I had to get approval from finance. But he, he has ordered all that equipment, and whenever that comes in, he's not sure. Timeframes, obviously, where businesses shut down and availability of some of the product. But he, he was ordering everything, and then when that comes in, then we will make those arrangements to have the cars outfitted, so. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I just want to, one issue is with the new police vehicles. Are we making sure that all the equipment that are put in the new police vehicle? For instance, when you open up the trunk, is the button for opening up the trunk in the right place, in the same place as all other vehicles? So that the officer doesn't have to search. If they're in one vehicle, one shift, next shift, they're in their vehicle. One might be on the left side, one might be on the right side. Is everything uniformed? Is all the police vehicles set up the same way? So no matter what police vehicle the officer is in, they know exactly what buttons they have to push and where they are?
Chief Sackowski, to my understanding, that's, that's correct. They should be set up that way, and we'll have to ensure that they are. But that's what we've always tried to do in the past, yes. Have continuity across the board. And obviously, if you had some older vehicles, and then we made some design changes or whatever, you know, based on recommendations, then there could be some, you know, variances between vehicles. But obviously, when we move forward, we try to have them all set up the same, yes.
Okay, my last, my last question to you, Chief, is on the car report. I know we went out, I know you went out to bid quite a while ago to try looking for a new vendor to repair our police vehicles. What's the status of that at this point?
We've never done anything officially. We, we talked to different vendors and, yes.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, so, you know, we, we were weighing some options. We talked to some different vendors in town, out of town. We, we're still staying with the person we have, you know, the vendor we currently have. Some of the other vendors were obviously a little more, you know, expensive in price. But, you know, but, you know, we can review that again. And, but we haven't done anything officially. It was just kind of, kind of weighing our options and see what we could, you know, kind of put feelers out and weigh our options, if you will, so.
Okay, Chief.
Commissioner, can I?
Excuse me, Chief, are you satisfied with the vendor that we presently have?
Well, you know, we, we, I've had some discussions, and obviously Commander Fabiano, who oversees car maintenance, and, you know, I think we need to review that a little better and maybe make some decisions come, you know, maybe July. And, but there could be cost increase and, but we, we could review that and, you know, weigh our options again, but.
Okay, thank you, Chief. The reason why I bring it up, only for the safety of the police officers that are driving the vehicles, that I want to make sure that they are maintained properly. And I noticed that the Union President, John Sackowski, wants to make a statement. Go ahead.
Yes, John Sackowski speaking. Yes, with that vendor, I did a little research going back a year and a half. We've had several different things going on with them, from, you know, blown motors to damage our vehicles while we're there. There's a lot of issues, and Fabiano, Commander Fabiano was tasked with that several months ago to, to go to different vendors. It seems like the ball was dropped on that. But just simple things, we go there for, you know, check the tire pressure three or four different times. No oil in the car. We blow a motor. Chief had damage to his vehicle, had to get repaired, you know. They put the jack through the floorboard. This is, this isn't minor stuff that's going on. They, they, you go there to have them ski in a car, and they can't, they don't have the right equipment. This is, you know, very time-consuming, and it ties up the vehicles. So I would hope that they would really look into this and take it serious. You know, our officers are driving these cars that, you know, going to calls and, you know, different speeds and just to make it safe for them. So that's, that's all I got to say on that, but.
Okay, would I, would I would like to just follow up, Chief? Can you please check into that and see if even if it costs us more for, for another vendor, we're going to have to maybe bite the bullet, only because we got to make sure that the police vehicles are safe for, for all the officers that are driving them, okay?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, it was, you know, we're reviewing our options, right? There was no ball dropped. The cars are pristine, you know. As soon as something is wrong with them, we take them out of service right away. So we never jeopardize the safety of our officers, and they never have been in any jeopardy whatsoever. And, but yeah, I mean, we can review, you know, the options again and go and get updates, and then I'll bring it back to the board to see what they want to do, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Mr. Bitso?
Dave Bitso, do we have a yearly contract? And if we do, what's the date of expiration?
There is no yearly contract. So years ago, a contract, I, I don't even know if anything was ever signed. I've never seen any paperwork signed, but I think at one point there was a paperwork signed, and then we just continuously work off that, what we've had, right? So that, that's kind of the way it's worked, and that's how we stay with that vendor. We probably would have that vendor, if I had to guess, 15, 20 years, you know, so.
I do remember a very long time ago, it was Falbo's, and there was a contract in place, it was a yearly contract, and I believe every year went out to bid, only because I happen to know the Falbo family. But that was an awful long time ago. I would think, I would, I would think that we, we should have a yearly contract in place, and we should go out to bid with this. Maybe not every year, but maybe every couple of years. If, if we're not happy, if nothing else, it keeps people honest. So I think we, you're, you're right, we do need to have this conversation and, and look into this a little bit further, and, and not, not two, three months down the road in September. Maybe start talking about it now. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of garages in town, so we've got choices.
Yeah, so the ones we check with, there is obviously, I think, two or three that were interested. One was really high-priced, and then one was kind of middle of the road. And then one vendor out of town was pretty close to the guy in town, the second one with the increased price, so. No, I mean, we'll, we'll push it forward, and we'll bring it back for hopefully June. And then we'll make, you know, start this, like I said, hopefully by July, if that's what we choose to do.
Yes, I do have to say that Falbo's, when we first went out to bid for contracts, Falbo's was the first garage that was the winning bid on the contracts for the vehicles. I believe they had the contract for two or three years, and then we went out again to bid. We always went out to bid for the contracts, and we always had them signed because they were a contract at that time. So I know Public Works, maybe you could negotiate with them, or they could do at least the oil changes and rotate the tires and change the tires and things like that. They used to do it in the past. And I think would, I don't know if they, they would consider doing it again. That's something maybe you should try looking at to see if Public Works, they do have the building, they do have a lift on there. So if something happens, but something major, we always sent the vehicle out to be repaired.
Chief Sackowski, I looked into the Public Works Avenue last year at budget time, and you know, they, they looked at things as hiring another mechanic, and then obviously benefits and all that. So, you know, they asked what we were obviously paying our vendor, and they said they couldn't. So, you know, they asked what we were obviously paying our vendor and they said they couldn't match it. And then it just, they basically said they can't do our work because they don't have the equipment. They don't have the manpower. They don't have the facility. They did have one lift, that lift broke. So I did check the Public Works Avenue. I think there could be a savings to the town, but I was told no otherwise. So I think Public Works is gonna be out of it. And then we'll just have to check with the other vendors and go from there, but...
Okay, thank you, Chief. Anybody have any more comments concerning the car report? Okay, moving on. Under new business, in your packet, you'll see that the chief wanted this on the agenda, purchase ATV and take possible action. I believe you have three quotes that the chief gave us in our packets to look at ATVs. I believe that Seymour Ambulance Corps has an ATV. And I also believe the fire department has an ATV. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure. Maybe Kyle, you could answer that. Do you, does the ambulance corps have an ATV?
Yeah, we have one that is set up. We use for, obviously, rescues in the woods and football, football stadium games and stuff like that. The fire department isn't really set up for anything really than carrying equipment. It's not, well, I don't even want to say the fire department. I think it's emergency management. If somebody wants to correct me if I'm wrong. But theirs is okay. It's kind of low to the ground, not, ours is a little bit higher. Gets around a little bit better, but yes, we have one. And the fire department or OEM has a Gator.
Okay, Dave Bitso.
Yes, Dave Bitso. Dave Bitso, I gotta say, last, you know, a year ago, two years ago when this first came up, I was 100% in favor of it. But I've changed my feelings on it now because and just hearing what we heard today. The Memorial Day Parade has been canceled. The Pumpkin Fest has been canceled. These are all the functions that we would utilize something like that for. I don't see anything going on in the next eight months to a year. So to buy something right now and to spend that kind of money to have it sit in the garage somewhere and not get used because if you don't run those things, that's not good. Those are the kind of vehicles that need to be running. It's like, you know, having a car sit for six months. So my position is right now that we strongly consider tabling this for some time, given the current state of affairs.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members, yes, John, Commissioner Duke?
Just for the record, I own several Polaris products. And I have to tell you, they do require a lot of maintenance. They could be finicky, especially if you don't run them. And the service of all the Polaris dealers in Connecticut is awful. Well, I don't know if you might want to consider searching for different manufacturers just for the ease of getting something repaired and getting it repaired properly. Because I have a lot of trouble finding qualified Polaris mechanics around here who could actually, even if it's a warranty issue, who could do it for the first time? So you might want to look into a couple of other different manufacturers and see what they have. That's just my two cents because it, these are expensive vehicles and they're expensive to maintain. And especially with limited use for something like this. You know, I don't know how much, you know, stuff we do off-road and, you know, in the wilderness or whatever it's going to be. But it gets pricey fast. That's all I have.
Yeah, I believe this was brought up a couple of years ago. I'll let you go on it second, Chief. I believe this was brought up a couple of years ago when we had that, I believe, tornado that went through parts of Seymour, all of Skowkrad Street, into Beacon Falls and so forth. And the police department didn't have a four-wheeler able to get up through certain areas only because of all the trees that were down. So I think this was brought up for that reason. Chief, did you want to make a statement?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I just want to go on the heels of that. So, yeah, I brought it to the board in December of 2018 and those were some of the discussions we had, right? Some of the emergencies and crises that have happened in town, the hurricanes, the blizzard, that tornado brought it to the surface again, you know, because personnel had a basically hike from, I believe, Morning Star all the way back to the Beacon Falls line with trees and wires. And a vehicle of this sort would have greatly enhanced our operations even at night. I had to bring in extra personnel, but they were limited as to where they could have traveled. So a vehicle of this sort, it's just not for off-road. The vehicle we're looking at this, you know, I know it's termed an ATV, but it's four-wheel drive. It, you know, it's road-ready. You're able to drive it on-road or off-road. You know, and then after that tornado, obviously, you know, we were trying to be in the forefront. Obviously, like you said, southern departments have them, the EMS. The town has the one. It's about 16 years old, if and when it works. It's not always available. You know, so we had weather-related events, the blizzard, the tornadoes, the hurricanes. So, you know, you could put one or two people in this vehicle and it gives us other options. I know what you're saying, Commissioner, as far as events being postponed or canceled. But this isn't just for this year. This is a purchase and then we have it forever. You know, as I said, the town has one for 16 years and that's what we're looking for long-term. And between the parades, the concerts, the Pumpkin Fest, the road races, the high school, middle school graduations. We have some walking trails. Those are going to be expanded, from what I understand. They're looking to close Hadad Road and the water companies maybe going to take over that whole area. They're gonna put a whole big hiking trail, you know, something should happen in those areas. You know, that will give us expanded capabilities if we had to go up there and patrol those areas, especially if someone was injured or more serious. So, you know, and now the guidelines, the guidelines from the state and federal, obviously FEMA and the state, Homeland, whoever. You know, they're recommending that departments now have an ATV for things I just described. So that's why I bring it back to this board. We were just, a while back, I told the board that we got $5,000 from FEMA to be used towards the equipment for preparation of another storm-related or disaster-related event. So I know the Board of Selectmen, when they approved that money, approved the $5,000 towards the purchase of an ATV. I would have to check if that is written in stone or could that money be repurposed if we don't use it for the ATV? So I, you know, if you want to table it and I could do some more research because I, you know, I don't want to lose that 5,000, right? And I don't think the department should lose that 5,000. So, you know, if it can't be repurposed for other equipment or things, then, you know, I would hate to lose that money. So I, that's why I brought it forth again. And, you know, it's good to be prepared, you know, that's our job to be prepared for what we may be faced in the future, so. I got the three quotes. You know, last time I was asked for three quotes, that's what I did. This time coming forth, the Polaris is the better deal, is the better deal for the money, the options, even though it looks $82 more than I think one other one. But this one has the more options. This one's the road-ready. It just has the horn, the turn signals, the side mirrors where the KNM doesn't. And, you know, so that's why I was looking towards the Polaris. They're government-rated. They're made for police, fire, emergency. So that's all I ask to take into consideration. And, you know, if you want me to research the monies, like I said, I think we need it, but it's really up to the board, obviously, to approve this, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Kyle.
Chief, which one, which body style one are you looking at? Are you looking at the two to three passenger with just the front seat? Or are you looking at a backseat as well?
No, it's just the front, just the front. I think it'll fit two officers comfortably. And then it will have like the bed in the back, obviously, for equipment cones, you know, whatever else we may carry in that capacity, so.
Yep, that was gonna be my other question. So the back would, it would stay open, correct? Because like a pickup truck.
Yes, yep.
What about doors? Are you putting doors on that?
Yes, so the one we're looking at, obviously, would have doors. It's got heat, obviously, for the winter and air conditioning for the summer. So it really is an all-around utility vehicle, could be used year-round. I know you have concerns about limited use, but, you know, if we had a vehicle of this type, obviously, it is road-ready. So, and, you know, we would have other uses for it and I think more so than just the limited stuff we do have. You know, if we had to guess, it'd probably be used right off the bat seven to 10 times. And that's without any unforeseen circumstances or maybe some other things that might arise where, you know, you could put people in it for different reasons, so.
I personally don't have a problem with it. I like the idea. I know some people don't. Yes, we have one in town, but when you need one, you need more than one and two and three and four. But that's my personal feeling. I would, I do agree with Commissioner Duke, though, because we have, you know, some trouble finding some decent mechanics to use it. We typically send ours once or twice a year, though it does sit sometimes. And sometimes it's out on the road, you know, four, five, six times a month. But I would say maybe table it to next month and ask the chief to maybe look. I know there's, I think there still is, there was a John Deere dealer up in White Hill section of Shelton, if they're still there, but maybe just get something similar. I know they built similar items, something, see what we can get, you know, see what they have to offer, just my personal feeling. But I do, I do see the value in it.
She's, go ahead, Mr..
I, I did, I've never really heard any good things about Polaris when it comes to snowmobiles. I don't know about Polaris off-wheel ATWs, but obviously I default to Commissioner Duke, Commissioner Kelly. But I know a lot of people that have the, that have the Gators from John Deere and I don't ever hear anybody complain about those. And I'm sure they're a few thousand dollars more, but that's the research that we need to do. I'm not, I'm not prepared to say hay or nay or even vote on it tonight. But Chief, you said that we would use this with seven to 10 times, right out, right off the get-go. Can you give me five or six examples of how we would use that in the first month or two?
Right off the get-go, sure. You know, we have downtown concerts. We always put someone down there to patrol.
Right now, but, excuse me, right now.
These are different times. I understand.
But you said off the get-go. But you said off the get-go, you know, you know, the next...
You know, it all depends, you know, how soon we get back to normal, right? So obviously, we know some events have been canceled. I understand that. But I'm just saying, in general, without this COVID-19, you know, we get back to next year. You know, you got the Seymour Pink Road Race, the Pumpkin Festival, like I said, the high school, middle school graduations, the two parades, downtown concerts, you know. And that's without any weather-related events and other issues that might come up, right? We've been up in, you know, the walking trails off 313 where obviously EMS fire. And we sent officers to that area to assist, but obviously, we didn't have the vehicle to actually go in the woods and search for missing people. You know, so those are examples. I'm getting complaints up on Tibbetts Road, right, Laurel Ledge Park. You know, my, some of my thought process is, the lady just sent me an email the other day, you know, welcoming us to go up there, do a hike of three miles, right? Because of problems that are occurring in the woods with ATV. So, you know, if we had something of this nature, then, you know, I could say, hey, officers, go up there and maybe sit, sit where these ATVs come in and try to stop them. And obviously, that's town property. They're not supposed to be on there. I know. You know, it's kind of, you know, what are we doing there? But obviously, we're there to do our duties. But, you know, so I think there could be different uses for it when you're talking stuff like that. You know, instead of walking in three miles, obviously, you drive in and it gives you other capabilities, so.
Well, I understand. So I guess we would pursue an ATV where we won't pursue, where we won't pursue in a patrol car through the woods.
No, I didn't say pursue. I said sit there and try to stop them.
I understand. I just think we're not going to get to use in the next 12 to 18 months that we, if it was normal time, if it was normal, if it was normal times, everything you decided was normal times.
I understand.
And my position is to spend 20, 25 grand on a vehicle that's gonna sit and not get used unless we have to drive a trail. That's my position. But if it makes sense to everybody, then so be it. But I'm just, I'm just speaking my piece and, you know, how I feel about it. A year ago, a year ago, you had my 100% support, but things have changed.
Well, it got denied last time, I believe, or, you know. But anyways, there was a question about the White Hills dealer. That dealer is no longer there. You brought up about John Deere. We looked at the John Deere. So John Deere combined, if you see your quote, they combined with IAS. They joined forces with this IAS. They sent out a John Deere. John Deere actually is trying to get into the market like Polaris. And so they joined forces with John Deere and this IAS, and that's where this IAS quote comes from. And you can see the substantial, substantial difference, and I think it's for lesser options. So we did research that, whoever asked that question. And so that IAS is a John Deere and teaming up with the other company. And that's where that IAS came in, just to clarify that, so you have a better understanding there, so.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Dave. Just make a suggestion. Look, we'll table this to the next meeting, but for the next meeting, too, have the officers in charge of equipment and stuff like that, new chief and a deputy chief. What equipment should we be updating? For instance, the radar units in the vehicles, how old they are. Should we get new ones? What equipment is our priority? Is the ATV a priority over other things? We don't have that list. We don't know what equipment is needed more than another. So possibly, we could table this to the next meeting and you come back with a list and then the board can make a decision of what items we think are the most important. And I don't want to lose, like you said, Chief, I don't want to lose the money either. I mean, if we have $5,000 available to purchase something, I want to be able to use that $5,000. But let's, let's table this till the next meeting and have them come back with the list of equipment that is, that is needed for the police department. That might be more of a priority than ATV or maybe not. So at least we have a handle on what we want to purchase for the police department. Is that okay with the board members?
Yep.
Hey, could I have a motion?
I just could say one thing.
Yes, Chief.
Yeah, so our radar units, our radar units have been in, they're in great shape, right? So we try to keep up on that. We try to buy one or two every, every year or every so many years. So just to clarify that, our radar units are in pretty good shape. And, but, yeah, we can look at that other equipment. The only difference is, obviously, we try to buy normal, everyday stuff such as radar units and everything out of the budget. This is because it's a special purchase. It's a one-time purchase and I feel it benefits the community. So we were trying to take the money out of the community account where maybe the radar units and stuff, you wouldn't do that because that's not really the purpose of that money for that, you know, for those reasons. So just to, just to explain that a little bit.
Okay, Chief. That's why I just want to know what kind of equipment we need. For instance, what I'm talking about is safety issues, too, that every time we ask for a new speed limit sign or stop sign, it always seems like it comes back to us and says, well, who's going to pay for that? I mean, there are now, which I, which I like, is there's a lot of signs that cost quite a bit of money now. Mile per hour signs, like 25 miles per hour. They're under solar and they have lights blinking around. It's stop signs with lights blinking around it. See what the cost of those are, too, which is a safety issue in the town of Seymour. Possibly looking at that, too. So, I mean, come back at a next meeting with a list of what our priorities are and let the board make a decision what our priorities are. And we'll go through the priority list and purchase those items before we make a decision tonight. So could I have a motion to table this to the next meeting for them to bring it back? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay.
No, I'll second it.
Kyle Kelly made the motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Tom Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stench is so carried. So Caroline, please put this on the next agenda and up, update on the issue and equipment for the police department. Thank you very much. Correspondence, under correspondence, we received a letter from the Poetess, I believe, is very nice. I'm glad the police department invented it for, I believe, he turned 80. How old, how old was he, Chief? 80 years old?
90.
90?
90 and married 60 years.
90 and married 60 years on the same day.
Wow, God bless him and thank you. Thank you for doing that, helping make his day a lot brighter and it was very nice to receive that. Also, which I appreciated too, was a letter from Griffin Health. I guess we went up there to honor the first. Nurses and staff up the Griffin Hospital and I believe it was the Seymour Police Department, Ambulance Corps, I believe also. That went up there to honor the. The nurses and doctors and all the staff that work up at Griffin Hospital. That was a nice letter to receive also. Appreciate it and want to thank you for making things like this happen. Both, both you, Chief and Kyle Kelly really do a lot of. Public service for the town of Seymour. I like your big parade of. Fire trucks and ambulances and police cars going through the town every.
We're done with that as of today.
Yep.
As of today. The birthday and graduation and anniversary, those parades are done. As of, I think, five something this afternoon. That was the last one. Obviously, the Memorial Day, we're doing something for Memorial Day, but. As Chief said earlier, I think collectively, and we were all, all of us participated, all three services. I think we did over 200 parades, so. It was something else. The officers on the road that participated, our guys, the fire department, so it was something else for sure.
Yes.
It was a beautiful thing to see. Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, it was a beautiful thing to see. Going through the town of Seymour and I noticed just in front of my house, everybody ran out of the house to wave and. Salute and everything, really appreciated. What our services are doing, trying to keep everybody a little bit upbeat through this hard times. But thank you. I want to thank you personally for that. Is there any other business?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I got a budgetary question. The budget ends on July 1st. For the police department. Is that when it runs, Chief?
Officially June 30th and then July 1st, a new budget takes effect.
Okay, because I was looking over the budget today, so you have machinery and equipment supplies. And you're only at 20% on that one. It looks like there's another 33,000 in there. What would typically, what would you typically use that money for?
So that's the, that's the 740 account. So a lot of the detective supplies come out of there, you know, if we have to buy anything for the detective bureau. A lot of, lot of our equipment, you know, whatever may break here, comes out of that account. So the reason why, you know, we always try to be prudent and, you know, how we spend our money and we always kind of wait till near the end, but obviously. There was a budget freeze on since January 1st, so. You know, it's, a lot of it has been frozen by, by the first selectman and the finance department and, you know, so. You know, that's why, you know, a lot of that money is still there. It's not uncommon for this time of year, so, you know, as we need supplies and equipment, we'll start purchasing that.
So what happens with that money? Does that go back to the general fund for the town if it's not spent?
Yes. Yeah, so in the past, obviously, because, you know, we operate 24/7/365. They have been very well, you know, good with us, you know, letting us get what we need as long as we can justify the purchases. I think we always have. And we continue to do so, so. A lot of the, like I said, a lot of the detective supplies, everything comes out of there and equipment, you know, if a camera breaks. You know, a video camera, you know, whatever we may need, you know, it could be some computers. You know, so different items all come out of that. Line item and. We try to make things work, so.
No, no, I, I understand. It's just to me, it's a lot of money to be. You know, sometimes I think we sacrifice too much and we end up giving money back in. And really, we should be buying new stuff instead of allowing money to go back. Not a criticism, not a criticism, because I've seen it happen everywhere sometimes.
No, no, we, like I said, I think we're conservative in, in, in our approach, but then, you know, we, we always try to spend out certain line of items, you know. You know, to get the equipment and resources, we need to do our jobs and. You know, we work very closely with the finance director, the board of finance, as well as the first selectman's office to make sure that we're all in compliance. We all. You know, meet our goals of not overspending, but being prudent where we spend it also and fiscally responsible, so. You know, we'll continue those conversations and like I said, the big, the big thing is there's been a budget freeze. And like I said, they've been good, you know, they've, whenever we needed, they have given us, you know, to do our job. I don't anticipate anything different, so. Yeah, we'll look at different things so that.
Just out of curiosity, where would that money have come from for the ATV for 20 something thousand?
So I, as we spoke in the past and we spoke, well, as I, as I mentioned earlier, I was going to take that out of the community account. That's that account we have for, for community functions and, you know. I think this would benefit the community in a time of crisis or need. Special piece of equipment and so that's why I was going to take it out of there.
So that's not on the regular police expenditure report then? That's a separate account? Okay.
It's a separate account and, and that's what I was trying to explain earlier, right? So. You know, like radar, radar stuff and stuff, that would come out of the regular budget, you know, and. You know, so. That's what we would do, even maybe with those radar signs. We looked at those in the past. I think we were looking at those in the fall time, late fall. We started looking at some of those radar signs, Commissioner. You know, that, like the commissioner mentioned, so, you know, the, we're looking to do different things and, you know, but some of that would. A lot of that would come out of the regular budget. Special maybe purchases such as this ATV would come out of a different account.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, just real quick, hearing that and, you know, putting some more thought into it. For next month, you know, it was asked that you come with, Chief, that you come with some, you know, maybe some needs or some wants as far as equipment. You know, if, if the board is going to agree, you know, to buy the Polaris, I think. It'd only be beneficial to look at maybe some other things that you wouldn't typically go through. On the financial or on the town budget wise and your line items. And maybe look at some department wants or department. Yeah, department wants versus needs that you would typically go through the town for. Right? I think the Polaris is a good idea. I support it. But let's, let's look at what else we could do at the same time and, you know, some, and benefit everybody, not that it's not going to benefit everybody, but. I think looking at the bigger picture of stuff that you might not typically normally on an everyday basis say, oh, you know, we need to. You know, get that radar mount fixed, right? Or whatever. But maybe something, something else to look at as a department, maybe yourself, the deputy chief and, and maybe the commanders sit down and talk and. You know, bounce some ideas off each other. I think that might, might be beneficial. That's all I got. And the inspector. Bob, you're muted. Don't know anything you said.
I just noticed that. Thank you, Kyle. Just, just to bring you up to date as far as the finances go, the town has always ran where, where they try keeping a bulk of their money to buy supplies and equipment, stuff like that near the end of the season. The board of that is very good at it. They usually buy all their new supplies for the next coming year out of the current budget versus next year's budget. So they're always like a budget year ahead and that's what most of the town does with their budgets, so. And I noticed that the chief, you were over at the town hall today, working with the finance director on, on the budget. Did you come up with any conclusions on how much money we have available?
You mean for remainder of this year?
Yeah.
We did not finalize that. No, we basically discussed the, you know, where. You know, we found some discrepancies with the overtime and the postings of those and then that was corrected and then. You know, we discussed the, the new budget briefly, but as of right now, it stands as what I told you last, last, you know, last month that. You know, it hasn't been approved yet. They're still looking at all that for next year, so. You know, you make a valid point, you know, if we're going to maybe lose some money or something, then, you know, we, you know, we try to buy things that, you know, maybe we need now, you know, for the future. So we, we, you know. You know, for example, paper or like prisoner blankets or, you know, in this crisis, you know, maybe some additional PPE stuff, so. You know, if this thing really goes off again in the fall, you know, and, and I. I think that helped us this year because, you know, I have stuff in supplies and, and, you know, so when this thing first hit. I think we were better than most departments, so, you know, that's what we kind of do, you know, we try to, try to spend our money wisely and, and. And so we have a stock in, in time of crisis or need, so, and I, and I think they approved that back in February when this thing hit, so. You know, we had to sanitize this. We had the PPE stuff. We had, you know, do we have enough? You know, we, we had a good supply better than other people and then obviously we got some additional stuff in, so, you know, for donations and stuff. That's kind of how we tried, kind of planned to do that, so.
Okay, Chief, thank you. I just, I just have one more question for you. When we buy equipment, what line item do you take whenever we buy equipment for, if you're going to buy a radar unit or whatever, what, what line item would we take? The money out. Out of. Don't we have a special line item for equipment?
Equipment's mostly the 740 account, yes. That's.
And that's only.
It all depends on.
That would be the line item then?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on the item that we're looking to purchase and then we try to match that up with the account of where the money should come from, so. You know, anything for the cars, you know. If you look at the 745 account, you know, I have a light bar in there, you know, I'm going to have to purchase a light bar. I think one of the light bars is, is bad. And so I, I mean, so that's, that's what we look at. Depends on what needs to be purchased.
So 745 would be the account number that we would take any, anything, equipment for, for the vehicles that we would take it out of 745?
Seven, you see there's 745, 740. That's where mostly we buy our equipment and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. The board members have any other comments on other business? Okay, here are no other comments on our business. Commissioners, let me start with Tom Bennett. You have any comments?
No, I'm good. I'd just like to see some of that money get spent, to be honest with you, you know, if, if the department needs something. They definitely should be using that money. It seems like they're a little behind, but I kind of understand, you know, the reason for it. But I definitely think being ahead on the expenditures, now that there's some extra money there, would be a good idea. That's, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to. Say, and I think I could speak for most of the board here, but I'd like to commend the men and women of the Seymour Police Department for everything that they've, they've done during this crisis. I know it's been stressful. Stressful for everybody, but they, they've handled it well and I know we're not out of the woods yet, but. I think if this is a pretty good indicator of, you know, what we're working with, we should be in good shape, so I commend everybody that's. At work throughout this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
I'm just going to echo actually really what Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Duke said. I really don't have much more than that. Other than I've been working with some of the men and women from the department since this also and kudos to them. Think there was only one officer that had to take an extended leave because of this, a couple that had a few days. But all in all, I think, knock on wood, as a department, we've, we've held our own, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bitso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick things. Tom, you're right. We should be spending that money and I think the first selectman has always been fair in allowing us to, to spend that money on stuff to stock up for the following year. I think sometime, in, in some cases, if not all cases over the four and a half years that I've been here is that. You kind of save, you kind of save up some money for emergencies, things that are really important. And because you want to have the money there for that and then if there's money left over, obviously you want to, you want to put that money towards supplies and get yourself up towards next year. The chief made a good point. He was in really good shape for when this thing hit. And I want us to be in really good shape for if it hits again in the fall, which I hope it doesn't. I'll echo the, the other comments about the men and women of the department, not only the police department, you know. The other departments in town, fire, firemen, EMS, all did a great job over the last couple of months. Everybody stayed for the most part pretty healthy. You know, some of us lost family. I lost my mom in a nursing home during the, to the virus about six weeks ago, so it hasn't been an easy two months. Chief, I did, I did Google, well, not Google, but I did a search for John Deere dealers and there is one in New Haven and one in Wallingford, if you want to check out John, John Deere Gators. And then I guess the last thing is that IA report that you gave us tonight or sent this to us yesterday was, was helpful and. I'd like to see if you can maybe supply that to us on a monthly basis with the, with the reports. It's not too much. That's all I have.
Okay, under Commissioner's comments, my, my only comment is Chief, I'm going to call you tomorrow. I have to sit down and meet with you and go over a couple of issues with you. And also the two attorneys, Anthony Bento and Brian Leclerc. I don't know if we call it our attorney, but Ben. Ben Proto would be giving you a call tomorrow to go over certain issues for the meeting tomorrow night. So I just want to make you aware of that, that he'll be contacting you for certain information, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, okay, next, union business.
Officer Skoski, how you doing? All right, so I got a couple of things. With regards to the IAs that were received, I spoke to the chief today. He provided us with a spreadsheet. Yesterday and I got back to him requesting the, the final letter, which was signed off by him and the officer. So he did get me that information today, about an hour before the meeting or so. So I just need some time to review to make sure I have everything from 18, 19 and 20. With regards to that, we'd like to ask the board for an extension on filing any grievances if there is any. So just to give us time to talk to the officers. And due to there being several of them that we have to review. We would, we'd ask for an extension maybe till next month. Next month's Commissioner meeting, if that was okay with the board.
Is that it, John?
No, that's, I just wanted to, you want to answer that now or you want to go on to something else or?
No, if you have, no, finish what you have to tell us and then we'll take whatever action necessary.
Okay, also, I spoke with the chief and the deputy chief with regards to a private duty agreement with Derby Police Department back on May 7th. We had some discussion, same agreement we have with Ansonia. We worked their road jobs, they work ours. The chief was supposed to reach out to the chief of Derby to discuss that. I don't know if he has or hasn't, haven't had any feedback yet, just to let you guys know what we're looking to do. And with regards to equipment. There's, Deputy Chief Fernaldi and I talked a little bit with some equipment we had ideas for. On the union side, vehicle wise, if we can get like portable chargers for our vehicles, so officers can charger their stuff while they're driving around. We were issued flashlights from the PBA. If we can get chargers for those in the cars, so there, you know, some of the radar units, I know mine is old in my car. I had some issues with it failing. So if, if the union can be also part of this, we can have some feedback from our members maybe to see what we. Do for our guys with equipment also. I know on the K9 side, if there is money. We might look, look to buy another bite suit. If that's possible, so just a couple of ideas for equipment. So I think that's all I have. So I think that's all I have.
Okay, okay, John. Thank you very much. Yes, if, if the union has a list of what they think is needed equipment for the police department, just give it to the chief, he'll go over and then at our next meeting, he could then incorporate that into the other pieces of equipment that he thinks we need. The other item you asked for, for an extension on the grievances, I'm going to have to place that on the table because it's not on the agenda, so could I have a motion to place the request to extend the grievance deadline until our next meeting next June, I mean in June?
This is Kyle. I'll make the motion.
John, I'll second it.
Kyle made the motion, second by John Duke. All in favor, say aye.
There's discussion before that. Isn't there a discussion at some point?
We're just placing this on the table. We're going to discuss it when we make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, it's Brian Leclerc. Correct. You should have discussion on the motion pending, which is a motion to table in case someone wants to discuss the tabling.
Okay, yeah, I, I, excuse me, I thought a table, there's no discussion under a table motion, but that's okay. You're the attorney, I'm not. So we have this discussion before we vote. Here are no discussion?
I, no, no, I do, I do have a discussion, sorry. I have a couple of questions. One, what exactly is the union asking to table? I didn't realize there was a grievance or anything or something to be brought today.
Kyle, was that to me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right now, there is no grievance, but we haven't had time to review the final findings of these cases that were turned over to us. So all of the cases from 19, we got a couple of them, but there are several that we haven't had a chance to review with the union and the officer. That the chief laid out his side of the discipline. So the step two process is, is what we're asking for the extension on.
Right, so, okay, so here's my, is there a, and, and forgive me, somebody may have the answer, but there, is there a deadline in which you can do, like, so there's one here from almost a year ago, where there was, it looks like a verbal warning issue. Is there a timeline in which you can file a grievance on that?
Yes, there is.
What is that?
So we're going by 21 calendar days from the time that the, the final was received. But we, we have some that are going back to March that we didn't receive right away, so.
You received it or the officer received it?
So the union receiving it. The officer may have received, some of the officers may or have received it and some haven't. We haven't had a chance to talk to them on that side of it, so that's why we're asking for the extension.
Go on. Hugh Sakazie, if I may. So the officers, if, if any action was taken, the officers are in agreeance, the, you know, meetings were held or, you know, they were asked to bring union representative, whether it was a counseling session, a counseling memo or a written warning. Whatever the case is, they, they had that discussion in my office and with a union representative. And whatever action was taken was taken and, and the officer was well aware of that, as well as a union representative, pretty much.
Chief, was there ever a time where you took discipline on somebody and there was not a union rep there?
No, I don't believe so, no.
John?
I have to disagree.
Not, not by their choice, their choice, okay?
By their choice, yes, okay.
They are offered that and then they are, if they refuse, they refuse. That's their prerogative and we've had that, right? We've had that with individuals with the commissioners. They didn't want the union rep there for whatever reason. That's their business. So, but i- i- if I took action on someone, I'd say, you know, get a union rep or whatever and actually, I, I think I even had either, either Deputy Chief, one of the deputy chiefs here.
Deputy Chief Fernaldi here, yes, he is correct.
I'm not sure which one you're referring to, John, but.
Well, there was several where people were called up for reports to make corrections and they were sucked into, oh, by the way, here, sign here, here's your discipline. Not by maybe you, but by Frazier. Was, was one other one where.
I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of that.
Mention to discuss it with my, my side. That's all I'm asking.
Attorney Anthony Bento, if I, if I may. So I think we're confusing two issues here. There's a difference between if, if a member of the union is seeking representation versus when discipline is actually meted out. When discipline is handed out, the union has to be given notice as well, because discipline is an issue of collective bargaining. The, the individual member may be okay with the discipline, but the union as a whole may not be, because it's going to be comparative for other members. So this is the first time we've ever put on, we were put on notice of these disciplines. As John has already said, we may not have an issue with these, but we just received them yesterday. We're just asking for an opportunity to.
So let me ask you another question. You guys are telling me, and I'm not trying to be difficult, you guys are telling me that anytime discipline was taken against one of the union members, you did not know about it.
Not in writing and some we didn't know about at all.
So how come you didn't ask about it a year ago versus a month ago?
We've been asking for these for, I, I got, I, I have asked several times. Back in July, I asked Deputy Chief Frazier twice in one week and I always got the runaround saying, oh, I got to ask the chief. I, I always got some kind of excuse and it never, never came.
Okay, and that answers my question. That's what I wanted to know. I don't have any further discussion.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion to place this on the table? All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five zero. Now, do you want, someone want to make a motion to extend their right until our meeting in June?
I'll make the motion. This is Kyle.
Motion by Kyle, second by Dave Bitzel. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Extension, so carry, five zero. Last thing on the agenda, anything more for the union? Nothing more?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, just to remind the board members and the attorneys, we are going to be meeting at seven o'clock tomorrow night, not six. On the IA, so just be prepared. We're going to, Kyle has the, I believe it's the same number we use for the Zoom for the meeting tomorrow night.
Just for clarification, it's not this number. It is a number that we've been using for the IAs since the beginning.
Yeah, I believe it ends with 109 or something like that. I believe it ends in, which we've been using for the IA. So seven o'clock, let's try to be prompt and try to get over it quickly, like I said, attorneys tonight, the both. Mr. Proto already left, but he, he will be contacting you tomorrow and to go over certain issues, so you can be prepared for tomorrow night. But we, but also the board also wants a list of any witnesses that you'll be giving, you, you'll be requesting, so that we know what the time schedule can be for the board. Is there any other further questions from the board members?
Is it possible, is it possible Kyle can send out that Zoom link again? Is that a big deal, Kyle?
Nope, I'll send it to you tonight.
Thank you, just so I don't.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I'm sure I have it, but trying to find stuff in my email box is a nightmare.
I'll do it right now as we speak, because if not, I'll forget.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, could I, yes, Chief?
Just to, just to go back to Officer Askowski, he brought up about the agreement with Derby. I discussed that with the Derby chief. Neither one of us is against it. It's just bad timing right now. He doesn't really want to do anything until some of this COVID thing goes, goes away and and obviously for, for different reasons, right? Because, you know, we don't want to be going to the other cities and towns if we don't have to. So as he suggested, you know, let, let's get past some of this, you know, maybe, and we'll review that in a couple of months, so. If you look at that agreement that, that we have with Ansonia, you know, it, you know, it, it'll be the same, but he wants time to review it and the timing's not right on his end and I kind of agree with everything that's going on on our end, so. It has to be mutually agreed upon by both cities and towns and so, yeah, it was discussed, just so the board is aware of it, but the timing's not there right now with that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, Chief, possibly, you know, this is May, possibly at our July meeting, you could give us an update on that. You and Derby Chief of Police are talking and see if we're about ready to sign it in July or August.
I will check with him, but like I said, both parties have to mutually agree upon it, so.
Correct.
Well, you know, you know, we always have dialogue, so not, not, not a big issue.
Okay, thank you very much. Could I have a motion to adjourn at whatever time? I'm not going to say the time.
9:19.
Caroline, you have a clock, so you're going to have to know what the time is. Can we adjourn at this time?
I make the motion, this is Kyle.
Motion, Kyle, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye. Abstention, so carry, five zero. Thank you very much. Have a safe night and a safe day tomorrow and I'll see you all tomorrow night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.